Okay, at six o'clock, I'll take roll call.
Fall president.
Okay, since we have a quorum, I can call the Wabash City School Board meeting to order. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission is that Wabash City Schools provides irrelevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in a global community. Welcome. We have a recognition.
This week is School Counselor Appreciation Week, so at this time, I will turn it over to Mr. Blossom and Mr. Madder.
Okay. Yes, Sam. This is Danny and this is Aliyah, the guidance counselor from Wabash High School. And really blessed to be able to work with them, they're the best in the business. Being an early college high school, there's a lot of responsibilities on the guidance department. Not only in the regular guidance duties that they have to do and help these students through those crises that happen. They also are in charge of making sure that all of our college credits and high school classes align and guide our students to success at Harvard Career Center and then the Wabash High School Early College Program. So Mrs. Danny is, Mrs. Danny and I started working in the same year at Wabash High School. So we've been together for a bit, so she's our seasoned veteran in the department, provides all sorts of leadership and guidance, not only to the guidance department, Jaclyn, I think she would say that as well. But she's a leader in our school, so we're really fortunate that she's chosen to serve Wabash City Schools for 20 years now. Good. And Sally's a graduate of Wabash High School, and I was her principal when she graduated from Wabash High School as well. Great story about Jaclyn, she reminded me of, as she came back as she was in school and interviewed me as part of one of her class assignments and said, "One day, I'm gonna be back at Wabash High School looking for you." And here she is. So she's a graduate, so has a unique perspective of Wabash High School and gives her all to serve her students and make Wabash High School a better place. We're really, really fortunate to have them, and I enjoy having them on my team. I really rely on them to lead the successful and rewarding schools as well.
Mr. Miss LaPage, so I have Randy and Amy LaPage that I've been blessed to be working with my entire time at the middle school. I'll start with Randy, we go way back to working out in the weight room when it used to be out by the football field. We were both teachers and we solved the world's problems then, and now we're back together doing that again. Randy primarily works with our seventh and eighth graders, and I'll explain a little bit why that works so well. Randy's passion seems to very much be in college and career, helping kids be ready to make that step. He spends a lot of time working with students to make sure that they can get all the finances possible through 21st Century Scholars and prepares them. Like, we just took a trip to Fort Meterbox, it was just absolutely outstanding a couple of weeks ago. But has a great passion for that, is very involved with the high school and the career fair or getting our students over. We know that has been a new thing since he has been there. Also great at handling the crises of seventh and eighth grade students, which as you all probably wear is too much for your tone. Or maybe not. But I know specifically today, he spent a lot of time with one particular parent, and we were able to problem solve for that student who could improve in a good way. So day in and day out, Randy brings those things to us. And Amy, I became very familiar with in the transition after middle school. We started meeting together, geez, probably in January of that year. And she re-acclimated me to the middle school because I hadn't been there in about 10 years and really was a driving force in the success that we have today, bringing the fifth grade over and incorporating the sixth grade and the teachers, which was a pretty big deal because we brought some teachers with us as well. Amy does a great job working with students on goal setting. She's in the classrooms, what are you doing now, the bucket lessons? She's in our fifth and sixth grade classrooms, teaching lessons with the kids, helping them understand what their future could be, where their opportunities are, and helping them plan for those things as well as planning for them to get to lunch on time, all of the different things. She also, this week, has been doing etiquette lunches, the last 10 weeks with our sixth graders, which if you've ever been in a middle school cafeteria, that is a pretty important lesson. But we value what she brings to us. I think the greatest part, I believe this fully, is the four of us in the office are a pretty well-oiled machine, and we all have different skill sets and different abilities and different thought processes, and we're all able to work together to make the middle school a great place. And the heart and soul of all of that comes from these two as they bring that to us. So very, very lucky to be working with them, very lucky to have them as a part of our staff and every kid that comes through their office or around their area is also a lunchbox. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Item G, revisions. Approve revisions for J through K to the board agenda. I will take a motion.
Second.
All those in favor of approving the revisions? Okay, are there any agenda items that anyone in the audience would like to comment on at the end? Item H, consent agenda. We have minutes from January 8th, 2024, claims, we have some donations, $80 from Southside Free Will Baptist Church to kids in need of lunch money, and B, $200 anonymous donation for OJ Neighbors students in need of lunch money. And then we have some financials. I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Discussion?
First, we want to thank both the Southside Free Will Baptist Church and the anonymous donator for their donate, donor, for their contribution to ensure that our students are able to get a healthy lunch. And then we are going to look at, if I can get it to work, our revenue and expense update. This we normally do at the second board meeting of the month, but because we were canceled last meeting because of our weather, we are doing this now. Okay. So we will start with our December 2023 revenue and expense summary. You can see, we ended the month much better than last year. Last year, we ended with a net income of about $50,700. This year, we ended at about $683,000. This improvement was due mainly because we had increased revenues. We finally received our textbook assistance from the state. We also received a slight increase in our monthly basic grant, which resulted from the DOE finalizing our graduation. We received grant money in our tuition support for the attainment of honors diplomas, and that was factored into our monthly tuition starting in December. We also had a larger grant reimbursement in December than we had originally projected. As far as our accounts payable and our payroll expenses, both of those were a little higher than what we had anticipated. We made our final payment for HVAC repair at both central office and for the middle school air handler. And those things were not planned in our projections, so that's why those are a little bit over. And then for payroll, we also had our tag, our teacher appreciation grant payout. And we do not project for that because we never know what it's gonna be each year. It's different every single year, so that's why those are a little bit higher. Moving on to our fund balances. So this shows our three key funds, Ed, Operations, and Rainy Day, and where they ended at the end of the month for December. We also compare it to the previous year. You can see that all of our funds, well, Ed and Operations has gone, is in better shape. Rainy Day went down, and that was because we did transfer $50,000 into our operations to help offset some of those operational expenses that we were having. And then looking at our key fund balance changes. This shows where we started the year, January 1 of 2023, and where we ended. So our major goal this year was to really improve our total of all of our key funds. And we started the year in the negative, about $1,050,000. And when you look at where we ended the year, we have improved that to negative $185,000. This is actually better than what we had projected. We had projected to be at about negative $511,000. So we've done some good work here. I'm pleased with the improvements, but we still need to realize that we're still in the negative and we've got to get that out. This just shows you our key funds. The orange is the education fund, the gray is operations, and the black is rainy day. And then the red line shows the total of all those together. So you can see that we hit our low in February 28th. And March was when we received that tax anticipation warrant, so that helped improve that. During the summer months, you can see that the total kind of increases, but then once school starts back up and we start having some more of our expenses, you can see where we ended. And then finally, this is our net income for the year. This shows the past seven years of data, net income or net loss. 2017 was the last year that the district ended with a net income. And I believe the year prior to that, the district had several retirements and also eliminated a few positions. Over the next four years, we saw a net loss. And starting in 2019, our enrollment declined, but our staffing increased. So that really caused that, that net income to drop. So in 2022, we did make some improvements. We went to about minus 1.4 net income to minus $358,000. This year, we did end with a net income, we had a net loss of minus $358,000. This year, we did end with a net income, it was $865,000. So like I said, we have done some really good things. I just want to continue to remind the board that just because our key funds are looking better, just because we ended with a net income, we still have work to do. We have to get that operations fund out of the negative and develop a plan of how do we continue to fund our operations when we know that tax caps will always be something that we're faced with.
Any questions?
I would just like to make a comment and just commend Dr. Sibley and the work that's been done to take off $800,000 from where we were at the beginning of 2023 to where we ended is really commendable. And I don't know if we'll see the same level of improvement at the end of 2024, but I know it'll continue to improve, and I thank you for the work that's gone into it.
My prediction is no, it won't be at the same level, but it will be an improvement.
What do you think has been the biggest contributor to getting us back to a better spot?
I would say probably first and foremost is right sizing our staff, looking at the number of students, our enrollment, and looking at the number of staff members we have. We also, you know, people have taken on extra responsibilities, so that has helped us immensely. You know, we've, we've eliminated, you know, last year, we put a freeze on spending. I know our principals were, were trying to figure out ways to be creative. So it really was, you know, a lot of us working together to make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda passes. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, February 19th, 2024, here at Wabash City Hall at 6:00 PM. There's some items of communications. Old business. Board will conduct a second reading and approve updated policy 3085 Anti-Nepotism. We've already read that, so I am not going to read it again. Do I have a motion to, for the, for old business?
I move that we approve the updated policy.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
As Rod mentioned, we did have this policy, but we did go through and update it based on the recommendations of the Indiana School Board Association attorney.
All those in favor of approving the anti-nepotism policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business, A, WHS Student Council update.
You can just tell me when to go to the next slide.
I'm Ariboh, I'm a senior at Wabash High School, and I'm the vice president of this new class. I'm also a senior at Wabash High School, and I'm a senior at Wabash High School, and I'm a senior class representative of the senior class. So I'm just gonna kind of give you an update about what's going on at the high school. So we're gonna start with our athletics. So the girls' basketball season actually ended last Tuesday in a loss against Greenback. And then the boys' basketball, their senior night's coming up next Tuesday, and then they have sectionals coming up. So their season is also close to being done. And then wrestling is finishing up, Elias Cressel is going to semi-state, so congrats to him. And then our swim and dive just had sectionals as well. And then Grant Ford was actually nominated for max prep player of the week this past week. For our first two teacher highlights, we have Paul Wright and Ellie Myron. Paul Wright is a high school PE teacher, and he also teaches advanced PE and Lewis History. And Miss Myron, she teaches pre-algebra eight and algebra one. And then we have Mr. Burnsky, he is our current biology teacher. He also teaches biological sciences, and then he does like the dual credit bio too. And then we have Mrs. Myers, and she kind of does all of our internships and our business classes, so. For the other things to note, we have Natalie Adams is officially named as the class of 2024's valedictorian. And then Jordan Hudson is the class of 2024's soldier's morning. And then Brooke Wagner just won the Lilian Downey Scholarship. And there's 69 in the state of school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation by Sarah DeGadillo and the foreign exchange students.
Thank you, thank you guys. So we really appreciate all the support that the board, the community, and the administration provides for these exchanges. In 2023, we actually had 75 short and long-term exchange students head to our school, which is, did not expect that number at the beginning of the year, but we are glad to see them. And we had 43 host families in Wabash County participate because we did have some families in North Manchester and Rowan and other places that were participating with us. So this year, though, we have, our first group is from Argentina. So this group here has actually sent us a group last year, so this is the second time. And Matias DeChaparone here has made his second return back to Wabash. And some of the things they've been up to is, of course, touring local amenities like the Honeywell Theater, the museum. We'll be going to Joe Sio White's here pretty soon, and of course, downtown Wabash, Moda, all those kind of fun things. But probably one of the things I really enjoyed too was they, they actually had a dance during the time that they were here. So they've got to experience a high school dance in America, which is only in the movies usually, so. And then, of course, the sporting events are super exciting because they can share a little bit. But in Argentina and many countries, the sports are outside the school, so it's not something that's incorporated within the school system. We've done some ice skating, some shopping, comments hockey game, thanks to Miralong. Sweetwater toured lots of places in Chicago, and of course, university visits while they're here because those students are usually going into their senior year back in Argentina when they return. So I'll do a quick introduction, and then I have a couple of questions, but then I'll open it up for you guys, some questions if you have any. Again, this is Matias DeChaparone, so second time with us. And then Sandra Hall and Santiago with us as well, who stay with Susan Dawes. We should back up, Matias is with Paul and Megan McCann for the second year in a row, so that's great. And then Mylin is actually with us with Jason's family, so thank you guys for hosting as well. A few questions that I wanted to just kind of point out is, what have you enjoyed the most since coming to Wabash?
Well, I'll start by saying that this whole experience has been really fulfilling for me, especially because since I've met my first family, because I, I've had two up to now, I felt really included in all the activities they have done. And I think that I've really bonded with most of the people I've met, so that was really nice. Also, I got to experience a lot of cultural things, like attending to a local high school and going to some agencies like the Honeywell Center, touring around Port wine. So all this kind of stuff was really important for me, and I think that's the most remarkable thing about the trip so far.
Do you want to talk about what you find, maybe you thought was...
No, I think that I have to say the same one that you say. Like, I feel so comfortable with the family, with the school, with the whole people here. It's a very nice place, it's so, so pretty, and it's comfortable, so.
And what was something surprising or different that Americans, not maybe just in Wabash, but the Americans in general do, that you weren't expecting maybe before coming on the trip?
Definitely one of the most shocking things there was, at first, was having a cafeteria. Like, we don't have that. Go and get food and then just speed around the school, and we just eat outside the school, so that was impressive.
I think that the whole internal is so different because we have a lot of things, like you have a lot of things that we don't have it. The system that you have is so different because, for example, we have to move class, like, we don't have to move class to class, like here, and the teacher has to do that. And we only have to stay in one classroom, and they have to move, so it's different. We have like a same group, the whole high school, and we don't have to, to change the people. Also, the system that we don't have, we, we can't choose the subjects that we want to have. We have in total 18 subjects in Argentina, and we have to, to have all of these one in, in a year.
It is interesting because they do like morning classes or afternoon classes, right? They don't go a full day.
Yeah, we have 14 classes in Spanish, and four of them are in English. So it's so different here because we can choose, like, what is option we want to do. I prefer can choose like here, because you can do something that you really like it. It's fine, it's something that we have.
Yeah, but definitely changing classroom was really like shocking. The first day of Wabash High School, the bell rang, and I was just staying there.
Do you guys have any questions from the board for the students or for the children?
What's your favorite thing about Wabash?
I think that I like the places that you have here, because it's a small town, but you have a lot of things. And I like, like, the, the different places, like the theater. We also made a lot of activities with my family and visited a lot of places. So I think that it's so nice, and it's a pretty, a pretty city.
Yeah, for all the, you know, with the small town thing. I don't, I don't think I've ever had one day when my postman has not waved at someone in the street. So much, I was walking, and I had to stop because I just realized my postman is not following me. So that kind of relationship between you guys, between one another, is really nice, I don't know. Because in the big cities, you don't know anyone, you're all, so it was nice, Chris, but yeah.
Thank you.
What do you think about the basketball game? Oh, they are really nice.
We don't have it.
No, I don't.
We, we don't have a support team, like, inside the, the school. So I think that is also one of the most amazing things that we have living here because we don't have these type of games, like, I think it's amazing.
Yeah, they all have such energy, so, like, they're really excited to watch the game on there. It's just a really nice atmosphere around them.
And these guys, I should note, this, were part of a larger trip that they're taking. They're spending about two and a half months in the United States, covering the West, the East Coast, and all the way down to Florida before they leave. So we're just unfortunate, but we're so thankful that you guys are here and you've been kind of with us in Wabash and hope you never forget this time and also that you come back and visit us again. Thank you guys for, thank you for letting us do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C, board will hear and approve superintendent's goals for 2023 and 2024.
Okay, little late on this.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, whoops, I'm sorry. Okay, discussion? So the first goal is to continue my, to increase my capacity around school finance as well as to continue to work to improve our finances. I have been taking the IASBO, it's CBO certification courses. And I believe at the end of this year, there's 102 hours I have to do. I believe at the end of this school year, I will have 16 hours left. So should be able to have that completed. And those have helped a lot, especially in the budgeting process. And again, when budgeting comes around this year, I'm sure I'm gonna go back to Matt and say, refresh my memory how we do this. Also looking for continued cost savings opportunities. Really looking at, do we have people that are retiring that we can be strategic about replacing? And also looking at redesigning our DLI program to make it more cost effective. Goals two and three really go hand in hand together. When we work to strengthen our PLC and RTI processes, those will have a direct impact on our student achievement. We are also looking at developing a model to allow for teacher leadership around instructional practices. The high school is piloting a lead learner program. And I know that Josh has shared quite a bit with our administrators of what they're doing. So looking at how do we emulate that in all of our buildings to give teachers a little bit more leadership opportunities around instruction? And then finally, working with the administrators to come up with a WCS instructional framework. What is it that we expect to see? What instructional practices do we expect to see each and every day in our classrooms?
Are there any questions for Dr. Sibley? Okay, thank you. I think it's important that everybody hears what your goals are, so I appreciate you bringing them. All those in favor of the superintendent's goals, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. D, board will pass the following resolutions to apply for 1003 flexibility waivers for the 2024, 2025 school year. One, resolution to waive school year and student instructional day. Okay. Whereas under IC 20-30-2-3, a school corporation shall conduct at least 180 student instructional days for each instructional year. Whereas under IC 20-20-2-2 states, student instructional day in grades one through six consists of at least five hours, 54,000 minutes over 180 days of instructional time. A student instructional day in grades seven through 12 consists of at least six hours, which is 64,800 minutes over 180 days of instructional time. Whereas using a traditional 180-day calendar with our current daily instructional minutes for the 2024, 2025 school year, Wabash City Schools would have at least 13... for the 2024-2025 school year, Wabash City Schools would have at least 13 extra days in minutes. Whereas the district recognizes the learning gaps and social, emotional deficits that continue to be present due to the global pandemic, educational expectations, and changes in community, family dynamics, and society. To address these gaps and deficits, several strategies will be implemented. These include, but are not limited to, additional staff training, collaboration, and creation of resources in the following areas. Strengthen fidelity of instructional strategies throughout the district. Build capacity of staff to analyze formative and summative assessment data to improve instructional strategies through PLC process. And provide staff with training to meet the tier one and tier two academic and behavioral needs of students through the RTI process. Whereas the district also recognizes the need for teachers and parents to work collaboratively and the value of regular communication. Whereas under IC 20-31-4.1-4, a school corporation may apply to the State Board of Education Board for flexibility and to waive compliance with various provisions set forth in Title 20 of the Indiana Code and Title 511 of the Indiana Administrative Code through HEI 1003 flexibility waivers. And then resolution...
No, that's the second.
This is the second part of it. Be it resolved that Wabash City Schools will submit to the State Board of Education a 1003 flexibility waiver application for six days throughout the year to be used for staff professional development and parent-teacher conferences, as well as a 1003 flexibility waiver application to reduce instructional minutes per day if needed for inclement weather. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that if the Indiana State Board of Education approves a 1003 flexibility waiver application, Wabash City Schools will not require students to report or participate in synchronous, I can't say this. Synchronous or asynchronous learning on the staff professional development days, thus reducing the total scheduled instructional days for students for the 2024 through 2025 school year to 174 school days. This does not account for any inclement weather days in which e-learning is utilized. Total instructional days, when calculated by minutes, will remain at or above the required for 180 days, 54,000 for first through sixth grade and 64,800 for seventh through 12th. Teacher contract will be the equivalent of the minutes, 81,400 worked during a regular 185-day contract. And then, resolution to waive virtual student instructional day requirements. Whereas under IC 20-30-2.7, a school corporation is allowed to conduct not more than three asynchronous virtual student instructional days. Whereas the district recognizes that student safety is of utmost importance. Whereas under IC 20-31-4.1-4, a school corporation may apply to the State Board of Education for flexibility and to waive compliance with various provisions set forth in Title 20 of the Indiana Code and Title 511 of the Indiana Administrative Code through HEA 1003 flexibility waivers. Be it resolved that Wabash City Schools will submit to the State Board of Education a 1003 flexibility waiver application for up to four additional asynchronous virtual days to use throughout the year on inclement weather days if built-in makeup days are no longer available and the allowed three virtual days have been exhausted. So do we have a, we have, we have an emotion to accept the resolutions?
I'm moved.
Second.
Is there discussion?
So first, I'm going to say, there is legislation out right now, and it was in one bill that didn't get moved to committee. So they are, they've moved it to another one, and I have not been able to find out what bill that is. But it is changing that all school districts would count minutes and you would have to go a minimum of 175 days. So that being said, if that gets passed, we will not apply for the waiver. We will go by those guidelines, but if it doesn't pass, we want to have these ready to go that we can submit our waivers. The first resolution will allow us to count minutes instead of days. And by doing so, we can reduce the number of student days and continue with our staff PD days. These days have been a great way to provide professional learning to our teachers in the areas of PLC, brain research on trauma, personal wellness, and technology. The second resolution will allow us to use additional asynchronous e-learning days. I was told, we did not get approved for that this year. I was told last year they weren't approving it. And then I know many districts that did get it. So I'm going to go ahead and apply for it just in case. Synchronous days require students to have to log in and be in a Zoom or a Google Meet. What we do now is asynchronous days. So we will apply for that. We have one built-in day for next year. We would have our three extra, so that would give us four. If they approve this waiver, we would have up to four more. Like I said, the board must pass these resolutions before we're able to submit our requests. I am going to hold off until the legislative session is over. And then once it's over, I have until, I believe, March 1st to, April 1st to get that, those submitted. So they'll be ready to go if we have to.
I'm just waiting for the, to see if that bill passes.
Yes.
When do we find that out?
It just depends. I mean, I know the legislative session ends March 14th, I believe, so at that, we should know by then, if not sooner.
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. E, approve the following out-of-town or overnight field trips. One, sixth-grade students to Chicago, Illinois on May 10th, 2024. And two, fifth-grade students to Camp Crossley in North Webster, Indiana, May 20th through 21st, 2024. Have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion?
These are two annual field trips that our middle school students get to participate in. The first is an out-of-state trip. It's just for the day. The second one is within our state, but it is overnight. And I recommend that the board approve both of these trips.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. F, approve the following checks to be voided and reseeded back to the fund from which they were originally drawn. Education, the date is 5/21/21, check 27776 and the amount of 9294. And then a cafeteria patrons account dated 9/21/21, check number 28346 for $7.
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion?
These two checks have been, not been cashed, and the State Board of Account, on December 31st, anything that's more than two years old, you are allowed to void these checks and then reseed them back into the funds. So that's what these, well, we will do with both of these.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. G, approve the attached preschool tuition fees for the 2024-2025 school year. Let me open it up. For half-day three-year-old, the program, the tuition will be $180 a month or $1,800 a year, with the employee tuition at $90 a month or $900 a year. For full-day three-year-old, the tuition will be 300 a month or 3,000 a year, with employee tuition at $150 a month or $1,500 a year. Full-day four-year-old tuition will be 300 a month or 3,000 a year, with employee tuition at $150 a month or $1,500 a year. Four-day four-year-old DLI will be $320 a month or $3,200 a year, with the employee tuition being $160 a month or $1,600 per year. I would accept a motion.
I'm moved.
Sorry.
Discussion?
So I do want to clarify, the first one was for half-day. All the remaining three are for full-day. And three-year-olds go four days a week, four-year-olds go five days. We are recommending that we increase our, our fees. We raised them last year at small amount. We have checked and we still continue to be lower than neighboring school-based preschools, and we are significantly lower than childcare expenses that a parent would pay.
All those in favor of the preschool tuition fees, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. H, approve retirement of Janet Sparks that qualifies for the early notification retirement incentive effective at the end of the 2023-2024 school year. I'd accept a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mrs. Sparks was the only teacher to submit for the early notification retirement incentive. As such, she will receive $2,000 into her VALEC account at the end of the school year. We want to thank Janet for her years of service at Wabash and wish her the best in retirement.
All those in favor of approving the retirement, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. I accept resignation from the following classified staff. Dana Wright as Corporation Deputy Treasurer, effective February 15th, 2024. I'd accept a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mrs. Wright has taken a position that will allow her to work from home. I personally want to say thank you to Dana. Over the past year and a half, she was a tremendous help as we worked on our finances. She was instrumental in the creation of financial statements that have allowed us to continuously monitor and track where we are at. She will be greatly missed. We are rearranging duties and we have posted for an HR slash payroll coordinator.
Any questions? All those in favor of accepting the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. J, approve Jade Stumbo as WMS Library Aid at a rate of $11 per hour effective February 20th, 2024. Accept a motion.
I'm moved.
Sorry.
Discussion?
Ms. Stumbo will take over for Tracy Denny in our middle school, and we are pleased to welcome Jade back to Wabash City Schools. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. K, approve the following coaches for the 2023-2024 school year. Assistant baseball coach Kyle Kalshimer, reserve baseball Nick Henkin, baseball volunteers Kent Montgomery, Jordan Holly, Andy Castro, and Father Jay Horning. Baseball facility maintenance Jack Holliday, Holly, assistant boys track coach Adam Hall, assistant girls track coach Caitlin Lloyd, track volunteers Clint Coogler and Bryant Miller, boys golf volunteers Ryan Carmichael, assistant softball coaches Heather Clark and Bailey Wingett, softball volunteers Kyle France and Charity France, middle school golf coaches James Burns and Abby Smalley, middle school track head coach Leah Howard, assistant middle school track Rachel Hovermail, Randy LaPage and Aaron Poole, middle school baseball head coach Chandler Jones, middle school baseball assistant coach Chadon Beeks, middle school softball head coach Matt Jason, middle school softball assistant coaches Megan McCann and Montana Castro, middle school soccer head coach Mark France, middle school soccer assistant coach Matt Mendoc, and elementary volleyball coach Katie Cromer, Stacy Parrot, and Eva Morris. I'd accept a motion.
I'm moved.
Second.
Discussion? Matt?
First of all, we thank all of these people. We're still looking for an assistant girls tennis coach, if anybody knows anybody. But we have now filled everything else. So we thank everybody for helping us out this spring and look forward to a good spring.
All those in favor of approving the coaches, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain as well.
Okay. With three ayes, the motion passes. Items from superintendent.
I want to start by saying thank you to our guidance counselors. I know they're not here. They all do an amazing job, and we are truly blessed to have them in our building, working with our students each and every day. On Wednesday, January 24th, I spent the day co-teaching with Mrs. Clark in kindergarten at LH Carpenter. I had a great time. Mrs. Clark did a great job preparing me for the day. I got to lead small groups in both reading and math. I've always said there's a special place in heaven for kindergarten teachers, and that day like made, supported that, 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 that thought. I really appreciate Mrs. Clark allowing me to join her class for the day. And next week, I will be co-teaching with Mr. Burns at the high school. And then finally, I want to remind families that this Wednesday, February 2nd, is a staff PD day, so there is no school or e-learning for our students on Wednesday.
Items from chief operations officer.
I'd like to thank Chad Nicom and Bob Evans because last week, they did things that nobody wants to do. We had some serious plumbing issues in the middle school and the high school, and they did a lot of dirty nasty work to get our building back going and to make sure that we could attend school. And so, thank them very much. If you see them, tell them thank you.
Items from administrators.
We have a fast food and scholarship night tomorrow at high school. Mrs. Denny and Mrs. Holly will be there with the team from InvestEd and I think some representatives from Manchester University. That's good. We had our SAT prep day, I guess, weeks ago now, so we're looking forward to see what the results of that will be. Our juniors are going to spend some time reviewing the materials over the next month in preparation for the SAT.
Okay, thank you.
A couple of quick things. Saturday was a big choir deal and 27, we had 27 little school kids and they all received goals, so that's a big thing. So we certainly want to be proud of them as we acknowledge their hard work because it really is, they're very talented and Mark was a very talented student. I think he took 70-some kids total, two busloads of kids, to a far, far away school. And they did, they did very, very well. So we're super proud of that and thank Mark for doing that. The other thing I would say where we are is, we are, I think we have college visits lined up for every grade level now. We will visit Huntington University, UK, some finishing school in West Lafayette, I'm not sure where that is. Our eighth graders go to Purdue and Manchester University. So those will be great trips for our kids coming up this spring. Right in line with what we're trying to do with them, so. And spring is coming today, it was beautiful. So it was nice.
We have a spotlight coming up soon, so I'll save a little money for that.
Other items from visitors. Items from board members. Jade?
I have something.
Jason?
So I wanted to point out, it's been a few weeks ago that Mr. Justin Denny had taken some students from high school for the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow. It's a STEM project. They're state finalists. They didn't win, but they were state finalists. I think that's a pretty big deal, and so I wanted to point that out. So I've been quiet this year. I've not talked too much about the robotics team. Last year, I was pretty pumped up. We have, so we had two teams this year. So there's the boys that were in the team last year moved up to the middle school, but they're still fifth grade, so it's still elementary aged. And so they're driving on 16th for the finals, a chance to get into a state bid. And then the other team is the 24th, I believe, they have a chance to get another chance to ride for a state bid as well. So that's a pretty big deal too, because there's only one returning member on that team. That's a, that's a pretty impressive thing to try to start over, basically. And Harrison Philippi, he's going to state for wrestling. He got first place at middle school state qualifier, so that's pretty cool. He likes to wrestle, I guess, so I want to shout out for that one, too.
Thank you.
Not you sitting down here. Okay. Um...
Not you sitting down here. Okay, um, I got thrown off a bit. Just a Heartland update. Um, they have a roof estimate from a company, and uh they let us know how much they have set aside for their savings and then how much each district would owe based on everyone's assessed value. From what I can see, I think our portion is fair. I would say we move ahead if everybody else is okay with moving ahead with the roof, once that comes to that point. Because honestly, we are looking at a better spot than some of the other districts based on our assessed value. So I think it's a fair um amount that we would um pay. And I know that we could look at our funds and figure out how to get that purchase for them. I think if we wait any longer, it'll just get higher and higher. So, and it's needed. It looks like bad. So. It was my, a nice first meeting discussion on how much we owe them. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Rod?
I just want to say a thank you to uh Mr. Hipskin, our SRO, is here tonight and the job that he does. He's a, he's a longtime supporter of Wabash City Schools. He's in, he's a, he graduated a year ahead of me. So I always got to follow him through school. But uh, um, he does a wonderful job for us, and there's no bigger, uh, there's no bigger supporter of Wabash than, than he is. So thank you for all you do. That's all.
I agree with that. And then I have a little report from the library. The library's been closed for a couple of weeks. It's, it'll reopen, I believe, two weeks from today. They've been moving some books from storage into the new part that was just built. And then they'll close the, the old part to redo. And so two more weeks, and then it'll reopen. That's all I have. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Okay, we need.